The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Mister President? Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Con. Twenty-two present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by John Watson Jr. of Maple Temple, and also Imam Muqman. So, we're so blessed today to have, we had a long list of people who wanted to say prayer today, and we're just so very blessed to have these two come up and take out of their day and spend the day with us to lead us in prayer. Would everyone stand for prayer? We quote from the Holy Scriptures. "Not that we are sufficient of ourselves to think anything as of ourselves, but our sufficiency is of God." Gracious God, Heavenly Father, as we begin another session in this chamber, we first thank you for the progress that we've made thus far. We acknowledge that your grace makes us sufficient for every task at hand, and your strength is what holds us as we live through these changing times. Speak your word to our hearts and minds on today. Make your will known that we may know and always walk in the path of righteousness, justice, and peace in our great city. The elected officials that have returned again, and those who are taking the reins of the city for the first time, aid them through your eternal spirit. Give them wisdom to govern. When they rise in the morning, inspire their hearts. When they return home to their families, let them be greeted with peace. When they sleep at night, allow them to experience rest, so that they can better serve the people that have entrusted them. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our family, our community, our great city. With God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, all praises due to God, the cherished and sustainer of the world's most gracious, most merciful, master of day of judgment. You alone that we worship, in your aid we seek for help. Please show us the straight way, the way of those on whom you bestowed your grace, those whose portion has not raved, and those who have brought down your wrath. I mean, oh God, we ask that you bless this assembly and give them physical strength, physical help, them and their family, but also, we pray that you give them the spiritual strength. You know, we pray that you give them fortitude, we pray that you give them tenacity, we pray you give them the ability to lead this city in the way that it need to be led, and that is that all people of this city can have an equal share in this city. We pray that you give them the wisdom, the insight, and the integrity to the new ones who have been elected, and also those who are taking on this task again. We know that it's not, it is hard, but you says, "Be in it is to anything that you determine." So, get them what they need to give another year of commitment to the city of St. Louis. Let's give both of them a round of applause. Thanks for opening up, opening us up with a great prayer. Alderman from the seventeenth, you're recognized on the temporary hiring of staff.
Yes, Mister President, members of the board, I would like to move to temporarily appoint the staff of the board as listed in resolution number two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-first. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, resolution number two, temporary hiring of staff was adopted.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the, Alderwoman from the fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I move to adopt the credentials committee, people that were elected following the report that was read. I'm kind of thrown off because I thought Alderman Volmer was gonna make the motion to do this.
No, he'll, he's gonna second it.
Okay.
Yeah, you go ahead and read through the credentials, and then we'll, we'll let him.
So, I should read them. Lisa Middlebrook, Christine Ingracia, Joseph Volmer, Carol Howard, Jesse Todd, Jeffrey Boyd, Shameen Clark Hubbard, Louis Reed, Sammy Moore, Annie Rice, Larry Ornowitz, Thomas Odenberg, Kara Spencer, Brett Norrian, Heather Navarro.
Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized to make the motion on that reading.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the motion of the credentials committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now, I'm gonna ask all elected, all newly elected officials to please approach the dais for the official swearing in.
When I say aye, state your name. When I say to the members of the Board of Aldermen from thee, that's when you will insert your ward number. Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Carol Howard.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Of the city of St. Louis.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
Having been elected by the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis.
Having been elected by the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis.
To the, to the position of member of the Board of Aldermen.
To the position of the member of the Board of Aldermen.
From the such ward.
From the such ward.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
And that I am not subject to.
And that I am not subject to.
Any of the disqualifications.
Any of the disqualifications.
Named in the charter.
Named in the charter.
For the office or employment.
For the office or employment.
I am about to assume.
I am about to assume.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
Only by the consideration of fitness.
Only by the consideration of fitness.
And the appointment.
And the appointment.
Promotion.
Promotion.
Demotion.
Demotion.
Suspension or discharge.
Suspension or discharge.
Of officers or employees.
Of officers or employees.
That I will not expend.
That I will not expend.
Nor authorize.
Nor authorize.
The expenditure of money.
The expenditure of money.
Otherwise than for.
Otherwise than for.
The adequate consideration.
Adequate consideration.
An efficient service to the city.
An efficient service to the city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office or employment.
The duties of my office or employment.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Everybody at their seats. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Mister President?
Thank you.
Twenty-eight present.
Quorum being present, we will now go to introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests, I'd like to take the newly elected Alderman first.
One honor, Mister President?
Oh, we can do that, yes, yes, well, we'll do, Alderwoman from the first. All right, Alderwoman from the, Alderwoman from the, Alderwoman from the second.
Thank you, Mister President. Today, for my honored guests, I have Cameron Middlebrook and Cree Middlebrook, my two children. I have my brother Larry Middlebrook and my sister Tanya Williams, my mom Pamela Middlebrook, would you raise your hand or something? Second Ward residents, our committee woman, Alma Jefferson, Maye Williams, Evelyn Carroll, also our second ward NIS, Barbara Graham, and also, I have Deborah Small from New York, New York Hair Design, also HBO spa treatments, which are sold in Whole Foods. She is here today, so thank you.
Former Alderman Williamson, could you lower her mic for her a little bit? Yeah, you raised it yesterday. Alderman from the fourth. We're gonna take all the even numbered, newly elected, Alderman from the fourth, and then we'll come back around. All right. How about, how about I just go back to the regular order, then? Any honored guest, introduction of honored guests, Alderwoman from the fourteenth, so if you're ready, that way you get up.
Yes, I'd like to introduce today as my honored guest Sheriff Betts and Gregory Christian, Sheriff Gregory Christian. Also, I would like to introduce two of my constituents, Mary Albright and Kathy Birch, sitting over here in the, in the gallery.
Any, any, any further introduction? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce Kenny Mitchell from the local seventy-three, who's down here today, and tell him thank you for coming down. I can't see that far up in the galleries, but I like to welcome everybody as my guests. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mister President. I would like to introduce as my honored guest this morning, my husband, John Zakovich, as well as the twenty-eighth ward committee man, Arthur Perry, and Eugene Wallace. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the six.
Mister President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest, the sixth ward committee woman, Mary Entrep, Bill Brush, St. Louis City Police Officer, and Compton Heights President, and Christina Garmandia, formerly with the mayor's office.
Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mister President, and members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest, my sister Molly Easley, who's with me here today. And up in the gallery, we have Jim Wersh, resident of the eighth ward, and Damon Alexander, also a resident of the eighth ward. Thank you so much for being here.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mister President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored and special guest, my wife, Linda. My daughter Tracy. Come on, y'all, my daughter Tracy. Dwayne Evans, the campaign manager, I'd like to have my little campaign crew to stand up. Andre McKinnney. The two live crew, took four of us to beat four people, but we whooped them. I've got, to get my glasses on. I do this every session, so be patient. I wanna say God is good. I was on my back yesterday in the hospital, suffering from a heart attack, and God brought me out of that hospital on time. Don't I look good? Andre McKinnney, my granddaughter Courtney, John Watson, Darrell Jackson, Jeanette Culpepper, Oscar Brown, and a lady I admire a lot, that we fight all the time, and she fight everybody that's sharing ties. And my great-granddaughter and grandson Peyton and Kayden. And if you get into fourth ward business this year, you gonna get in trouble. Stay out of the fourth ward business.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, my mother Penny Hubbard, committee woman of the fifth ward, and former state rep of the seventy-eight district. My father Rodney Hubbard, former committee man of the fifth ward. My brother Rodney Hubbard, former state rep of the fifty-eight district. My sister Daphne, my brother Tony, my nieces Ebony and Ariana, my cousin Melvin Hubbard, and all of my Clark Hubbard extended family, my nieces Atsla and Aisha, and that's all. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special and honored guest, two phenomenal women in my wife, my life, my wife Patrice, and my mother Mildred.
Alderwoman from the twentieth.
My mic is not working. There we go. Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. Today, I'd like to introduce my honored guests, my mother and father Patty and Bob Spencer, and my son Ty.
Alderwoman from the eighteenth.
Mister President, I would like to introduce as my honored guest, members of the International People's Uhura Movement, who helped to get me elected, and as well as the many guests from the eighteenth ward, who worked diligently. All of you, and if I, if I miss anyone's name, will you please stand? I don't, I don't wanna miss one person's name, because everybody who came from the eight, who live in the eighteenth ward, who voted for me, helped to get me elected. So, please, don't raise your hand if I sit down and don't call your name, 'cause I don't want you to tell me later, I didn't call, you didn't mention me. I'm, I wanna make sure I mention you. I walk up here if I forget. Oh, okay, I need to write it down, okay. We have, and I, okay, I will start with Miss Griffin, Miss Griffin, who's my, Woody, who did all kinds of work, McCree, Cynthia McCree. I want anyone, I would call some names if I missed. Miss Alderman, it's Miss Alderman, will you please? Audrey Alderman was a great, a great worker. Miss Lucinda Frazier, who's my friend, she's an artist here, she's sat on the center committee with me many years, and she's always been a savior and a supporter. So, also, we have Mr. Mohammed, who is one of my business friends in the neighborhood, Mr. Mohammed over there. We also have our brother, brother Anthony Shahid, who is one of my friends, and one of my enjoyers and supporters. One of my great friends too, is Zaki Baroudi, who has been in the struggle with me in the trenches since I was a kid. So, Zaki is, is one of my great supporters. Also, we have some of my great supporters. Hazel Priest, from the eighteenth ward, is one of my great supporters. Miss Pamela McLukas, who's my great supporter over there, she's a realtor, sir, she ever want to buy some houses, she got out there and worked for free, instead of selling houses, she was out there selling me. So, so I really appreciate it. And I, and so those are the kind of people who got me down here, so when you see me arguing and fighting, these are the kind of people I would be fighting, but not for myself. I even, I was pastor, a friend of mine, Reverend Watson, will you please stand up? How can, how can you not win when you have a holy man on your team? So, where are they got here? Okay, I want the other people who I didn't call, I know I missed somebody. Okay, I don't see anybody standing here or looking at me. I'ma look up in the, could you state, I'm stating names so I can say it. Come on, stand up, don't be, come on, state your name. Catherine Smith. Miss Catherine Smith Morgan, who is one of my great supporters, come on up and state your name.
Irene Saul.
Huh?
Irene Saul.
Oh, Irene Saul, now, oh, yeah. And she's even, went on some demonstration with me, I do demonstrate, so you all see some of that too later on. So, I do whatever's necessary. Anybody else up there?
Pastor Fanny Taylor.
Who?
Pastor Fanny Taylor.
Miss Catherine Fanny Taylor.
Pastor Fanny Taylor.
Oh, Pastor Fanny Taylor is one of my great supporters, so I have some spiritual leaders, so you know I'ma be blessed. Anybody else?
Oscar Brown.
Oh, yes, 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 Oscar Brown. Oscar Brown took, he goes to the ward meetings, he took my sign, he prayed on me, he's a reverend, and he did everything else that he could do to help me get elected. Anybody else over there?
Barbara Martin.
Oh, Barbara Martin, Miss Martin, how you doing?
Oh, is that Sergeant?
Oh, yes, that's Sergeant, he should've been a captain in the military, but he only, he's a captain, he's a, he was a sergeant in the military, but he's a captain in the eighteenth. 18th Ward, so he gets a promotion. Anybody else? I'm, I'm gonna take my time. Oh, Camille Holmes. Okay, thank you so, oh, Bree. Oh, and my goddaughter, is that my goddaughter over there? Camille. That's my goddaughter, Camille Holmes, and then Bree is her mother, so. Oh, Delores McCray, yes, and she's, took my side and go to the ward meeting, does everything she can do for the neighborhood. And, uh, and so this is my other goddaughter, Emily Anne Collins. So I have two, I have actually three goddaughters and three daughters. So you know, and now I don't have any sons, so you know, I, I just like girls and women, so.
Any, Alderman from the 2nd?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I also have as my honored guest, my daddy Larry Middlebro.
Any further introductions? Alderman from the 24th?
Yes, I'd like to introduce some of my special guests. I have Ann Glazer, my girlfriend here, who's been kind enough to stick with me through the entire campaign. How about now? So I'd like to thank my special guest, Ann Glazer, for coming out. She is my girlfriend. She's been kind enough to stand with me through the campaign process and all the craziness when I wasn't around to take care of things. My mom Danny Norrion, you know, it's hard to say much more about your mom. My sister Cammy Norrion, in the yellow there, she's been, she's actually now one of my 11,000 bosses. She's a constituent of mine as well, which I look forward to hearing her feedback. My brother Ram Norrion, he's here as well. I don't know if his wife and daughters are here. Well, they're here in the building at least. And then Ricky Whalen, who was the first guy to go out and knock doors for me in miserable cold weather when he didn't have to. And we're not related. He just believed in what I was saying, what I was doing, and took action on that, and that's, that's incredible. And then Reginald Garth in the back here, who is on the board of the St. Louis Young Democrats and is a tireless worker for Democratic causes. Thank you very much.
Alderman from the 26th?
Mr. President, members of the board, first of all, on Jesse's behalf, I want to make sure you all knew that we, the three of us were instructed yesterday to take our time, because this is the only shot we have. So don't think that he was just going back and going back and forth. He was making sure, doing what we were told to do, which was thank everybody. So again, thank you. I have a list as well, but there's a couple of people that aren't here.
Guys, take your time.
That's my grandfather, Joseph Clark. Whose desk I'm sitting in now. He was the former Alderman of the 4th Ward. He was the first African-American, um, first African-American to run for president of Board of Aldermen. And when that race wasn't successful, he turned around and was the only person to win for a write-in in the city of St. Louis and got his seat back in the 4th Ward. He was the first African-American Director of Public Safety in the city of St. Louis. He was the president of local and regional chapters of NAACP. And that's just, all of this is a snapshot, because in his retirement, he opened a non-for-profit called Self-Help Housing, which literally picked up men, black men, off the street and taught them the construction trade. And they built houses and rehabbed houses that people still live in today in the 4th Ward. And I'm very proud of him, and I talked a lot about him during my campaign. So being in this seat means a lot. Thank you, Cara Spencer. We were at the caucus, and I showed a picture of my grandfather, who Louis, Louis and I had a conversation, and he said, "Show it to Terry." So I showed it to Terry, and Terry said, "That was my father." His father was actually in the picture as well, sitting, Sam Kennedy was sitting in his chair. We counted over, and we counted that this was the seat. And I was still sitting there nervous. And then my sister Tamika, Alderman of the 5th Ward, went right over to Cara and asked her, and she said yes with no hesitation. So thank you, sis, and thank you, Cara. It means a lot. So these are hands, or praying hands, that my grandmother, his wife, had. And the shirt on the chair is my grandfather's chair. So my most honored guest today here is my 92-year-old grandmother Sally Simmons. She wouldn't have missed it, even if I tried to talk her out of it. So we got here like 8:15 this morning, 8:40 this morning. And I would like to thank my husband Rodney Hubbard, who has, I don't know how many titles, but one of the most important titles is I feel safe. And I know my children are safe. We have five. That's Anyana, Little Rodney, Jabari, Atala, and Aisha. And I'd like to thank my mother, Rochelle Clark, for everything. And my father, Joseph William Wathallamue Clark Jr. I would like to thank my father, Lord General Rodney Hubbard Senior. And my mother, Lord Committee Woman, former State Representative Penny Hubbard. My little brother Joseph is here. My sister Trina is here. My sister Daphne is here. Of course Tamika, 5th Ward Alderman, is here. Nadia and Aisha upstairs. I would like to thank my nephew that's here, Roddy. My nieces that are here, Ebony and Ariana, always there, always there. My sister Daphne, my brother Tony. I had a couple of people in the campaign from day one, and when I say day one, I mean when I was even thinking about it. And that was Leslie Pinkston. Thank you, Leslie. Yeah, Pinkston, yeah. And somebody that was on the ground with me most every day, Talib Elameen, let me point her. I, I was raised to do things in order decent and base things in prayer, so decisions were made. Sometimes on my behalf that I didn't even know about, but literally, there's a man here who prayed me down to the Board of Alder, I mean, to the Board of Elections to file, and that's Reverend Lee Clayton Goodman in the back. Thank you. That's my weekly Bible study. There's a plug at St. John Amy. And then there's a lady who prayed for me all the time and literally prayed me into Election Day. When I say literally, she started a prayer call, and we prayed every night for seven days up until Election Day, and that's Reverend Charlie Kibby Johnson and her husband Oscar Johnson. I'm proud to have some constituents here. Mrs. Gaines, Adrian Gaines is here. My cousin Lisa Fairbanks is here. Mac is here. She's another descender of my grandfather, but she's also a constituent. I'm proud to have my cousin Laura here, all the way from LA. And her mother, Beatrice Strong. I'm proud to have Antonika Shahid and Brother Shahid here on my behalf. Some other important people that helped me a lot during the campaign, because kind of by default, but now we've become sisters, is the 26th Ward NIS Kai Johnson. And Officer Connors, which is our 26th Ward Problem Property Officer. I see one of my board members upstairs, Ms. Morganford. Another proud 26th Ward resident that has a lot of passion for 26th Ward is Justin Idleberg. I saw him earlier. He's in, Justin Idleberg is here. Thank you. And he even went out and got a purple tie for me for today. Mr. Roberts is behind him. Mr. Roberts was an early supporter of, and his wife, Dr. Joyce Roberts, were early supporters. I thank you for being here. Is Kevin Bryan still here? I'm not sure if he's still here, but Kevin Bryan was also one of the people that was involved in concept, because he held me with my flyers, and he held me with my ideas and making sure they came to light on paper. I would like to thank my friends at the Corporates Union. I don't know if anybody watched my campaign, but I went against a lot of people. I went against a lot of people. Sometimes even myself. But the Corporates Union embraced me early on, and I thank them for that. Thank you. Somebody who literally got me through Election Day is my cousin Ronald Kirk upstairs. Literally got me through Election Day. Thank you, cuz. Ms. West is in the building. Everybody knows Ms. West. She made sure, she called me last night and made sure. Attorney Sherry Faulkner. I'm claiming you too. I don't know if you hear from me or not, but I'm claiming you too. So I'm gonna do like Jesse now. I took the time to look around, and I thought I, I thought that if I missed anybody, it's a lot of people that I can name that helped me throughout the campaign, that called me, that text me from the Board of Aldermen and from other levels of government. And I just thank them for the encouragement, because a lot of times I did feel like I was going against more than what I thought I was going against. But I knew where I was supposed to be. I knew this was my seat. And some things just confirm things, and you never know. When we were at the caucus, I don't know if you're familiar, at the caucus you pull cards. And I forgot somebody. I just thought about it. Frank, come here, Frank. The former Alderman Frank Williamson. I don't know how I forgot him. He is on my list. Frank, I want to thank you for your years of service in the 26th Ward. I want to thank you for encouraging me, even though it wasn't what everybody else was doing at the time. And I just thank you for all, when I served as your Committee Woman in the 26th Ward, for our working relationship and for always telling me, "Call me, I'm gonna answer the call." So thank you. So in the caucus, we pulled numbers to see where we would rank in seniority. You just pull a card out the deck, and then out of my class, there was four people. And I pulled the card that had me second in my class. And since I'm kind of competitive, I was like, "Oh, I won first." Yeah, and I just was like, "Okay, I'm not first," you know. But then when they brought the list to me, it showed me that the, the card that I pulled made me 26th in seniority in the list of seniority. So what are the odds that you pull and you get on the list and you get in your ranking seniority of the ward you're gonna represent? So everything, a lot of things fell into place. I thank you for people that did stuff that I didn't even know about. Kimberly, Bree, y'all came up to me at different times and said stuff to me. And I know this thing could go on and on, but I just want to thank you. I want to let everybody in the 26th Ward know that, thank you, John. I want to know, want everybody in the 26th Ward to know that I'm here, but we here. So I don't want you to ever feel like I'm here without you all. And you know that I said it before and for, when I won, we won. So I'm looking forward to everything that's gonna happen in the 26th Ward. You can't bother me. It's one little thing about people with a personality like me. I like to help people. I like to serve, but it's hard for me to ask for help. And some people force themselves on me, and I thank them for that. There's people that love and know me and know I wouldn't ask. They force theirself on me. But one of my good friends told me, when I didn't ask him for something, that I can't bother him. I said, "I don't want to bother you." He said, "You can't bother me. Allah put me here for you to bother me." And I feel the same way. You can't bother me. God put me here for you to bother. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 12th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Ms. Hubbard, I'm impressed. You come from a long-standing line of fine people, and you married one of the finest gentlemen I've ever known, Rodney. So I wish you the best of luck down here. I'm sure Tamika will help you out a lot, and we enjoy having you down here. Mr. President, members of the board, I just want to introduce my, my son Anthony. He's still here. And also, I'd just like to introduce Ms. Rachel Bach McClure, who was very instrumental and helped me win my reelection down at Ward 12. Thank you.
Any further? Alderman from the 18th?
First of all, I would like to recognize Mr. Al Willis. You see him sitting in the Alderman's chair. If it wasn't for him sticking with me, I wouldn't be here. So Mr. Al Willis did everything accidentous, including, anything accidentous. So Mr. Al Willis, thank you so much for all you do for the community. He's always been available for many, many years. Thank you, Mr. Willis, for living in the 18th Ward and making our ward a better place to live. We also have a friend, David, he's my friend, a good friend of mine. Thank you, David, for all you do for the community. We also have, uh, Dr. Orwell from Galilee Baptist Church. I don't know if he's still here. Without my daughter Ellen Todd, I wouldn't be here. She's the 18th Ward Democrat Committee Woman, and she is with me on, we're together on everything that we do. Also, I hope I pronounced the person's name right. Are there any other 18th Ward residents that I did not call? I'm gonna look around again. If I mispronounced your name, take your stand and make me pronounce it right. So I'm looking around, so when this is over, I don't want anybody calling me, telling me. Oh, Judith, oh, I see my friend Judith. Oh, no, my, she lives on the same block I live on. Been knowing Judith for many years. Let's give Judith a, a hand. Are there, are there any other people? We're gonna take our time. They told us to take our time, make sure we don't miss anybody, so I'm gonna look around for the last time.
I think you got them. I think you got it.
All right, again, 18th Ward residents, my comrades from the Yehuru Movement, and Yehura means, and Swahili, which is Africa's, one of Africa's biggest languages, means freedom. And this is what you will see me fighting for on the Board of Aldermen. Whenever you see me fighting, it'll be fighting for the people. It won't be personal. But I will be here to fight, to make sure that our community gets its fair share of everything that we pay taxes for.
Alderman from the 4th?
I'd like to thank Ms. Alavoyes of the daycare, Senior Living Daycare in my ward, Bree Holmes. And I'd have Sam Reed just stand up. Sam Reed, would you stand up? A trooper. That's Louis Reed's son, and they came in and helped. Thank you, Mr. President. I wouldn't be here without you. I wouldn't have done it if you hadn't encouraged me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alderman from the 10th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on April 16th, which is National Wear Your Pyjamas to Work Day. I'm glad no one did. But I actually have guests for a change with me today, as we've gotten reelected for the fifth time. My lovely wife Sue, who for the past 30 years is here. With her 91-year-old mother-in-law, who stays on me like a tick. You can believe what she keeps me in line. Dorothy Bartoni, thank you very much. And to all you newly-elected Alder people today of your first time, to remember, enjoy this day. This is the this day. This is the most popular you'll ever be. Thank you.
Yes, exactly. Alderman from the 24th.
Yes, sir. Uh, there was, uh, one person who I forgot to mention, uh, in my previous reading. I wanted to thank Caroline Fan. Uh, she's worked tirelessly on issues involving the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community. She was a, a huge benefit to me on the campaign trail and, uh, she'll continue to work on those issues and, uh, I look forward to working with her on them. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Come, going once, going twice. Alderman from the 18th.
I have Richard Ellis, who is, uh, Fountain Park Neighborhood Association, longtime worker in the community. Thank you, Richard.
Alderman from the 1st.
If, if all the other people who just got elected are finished, are we finished with everyone?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go last. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, okay. I wanted to do a special introduction. I've talked about this many times on the floor. As the woman that's been here the longest, I'm, I'm a proud mother today. I want you to know that the board is gender equal today. Uh, and, and that's important. We have 14 women and 14 men and the members of the Board of Alderman for the first time in history. I talked about this. I'm, I'm tearing up, so I'm a big crybaby sometimes. I talked about this in February, um, at the end of our session, and the Alder, the new Alderwoman from the 26th sent me an email and said, I want to be the 14th Alderwoman. And I know the Alderwoman because I helped her when she became the Committee Woman of the 26th. And so, she is the 14th Alderwoman. And I would just like to take a chance and, and, and ask, uh, the Alderwoman, women of, uh, the Board of Alderman to please stand, um, because we do have 14 and I want people to know what female power looks like. Starting with the fir-, second ward, Lisa Middlebrook. Fifth ward, Tamika Hubbard. Sixth ward, Christina Gracia. Eighth ward, Annie Rice. Please stand, stay so we can show what it looks like. Everybody stand. 11th ward, Sarah Martin. 13th ward, Beth Murphy. 14th ward, Carol Howard. Please stay. 15th ward, Megan Green. 19th ward, Ms., uh, Davis, I'm sorry. 20th ward, Kara Spencer. 26th ward and the 14th Alderwoman, Shamim Hubbard. 27th ward, Pam Boyd. 28th ward, Heather Navarro. And first ward, Sharon Tyus. This is what gender equality looks like. I want to get these are my guests today. Mr. President, you better be careful because we're forming a women's caucus. And, and, uh, the Alderman from the 21st did ask to, uh, join and we told him that we were discriminating and only women could join.
Only women. Alderman from the 14th, did you have something?
No, sir. Just yay, woman power.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Well, I have a few introductions also. I want to just welcome a number of friends and family members and people that I've known from throughout the community for numerous years. Let me just start with some of the activist community and some of my very close friends. Brother Shahid, Zaki Baroudi, please stand and let's give them a big round of applause. All their work. I know there are probably other members of the activist community that are here and up in the galleries that I, I do not see right now. Let's just give them all a big round of applause and thanks for all of their work. I also have a couple of people who have worked on my campaign since my very first campaign. And, uh, you know, they work the phones. If you've gotten a phone call from them, you've gotten a phone call from one of these three people. There were more of them, but they're, I don't think they're all here today. But Ms. Robbie, Ms. Chauncey, and Brother George Poole, right back there on the wall. Let's give them a big round of applause. My cousin Ronnie, you've always been there. Thank you, man, for everything. Let's give him a big round of applause and best friend Jerome Murray, that I've known forever. Jerome, other, other than me, my wife and kids, Jerome's the only other person in the city of St. Louis with a key to my house. So, if anything's missing, we go look for Jerome. You know, um, my sister-in-law Kathleen, thank you so much for being there all the time. My staff, Mary Collins, Mary Reese, Tom Shepard, Maurice Falls. Thank you guys for what you do each and every day, working on behalf of the people of the city of St. Louis. Emily, thank you. Emily Collins, thank you. Let's give Emily a big round of applause. Mary Collins, her mother Teresa, Emily, we're all family. So, thank you. Thank you for everything that you all do. To all of the committee people, committee men and Aldermen, that list is way too long for me to list everybody. And I'm looking across this gallery and nearly every single Alderman played a role in, in this reelection campaign. And I am just so moved by it and I'm so thankful for all the work that all of you put in. See Mr. Middlebrook back there and some other committee people. I'm sure you're here, but if I don't see you, charge it to, uh, my head and not to my heart. Let's give them a big round of applause and all the members of the Board of Aldermen for what you've done. To the members of organized labor, and I know you're probably here somewhere in the galleries or somewhere. Thank you. Thank you so much for your work. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your funding and everything that it took, all the phone calls and everything that it took to assure this reelection. Let's give them a big round of applause. I want to send a thank you out to the business community and thank them for everything they've done to help in this reelection campaign. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you to all the voters that entrusted so much in me and the other members of this Board of Aldermen. I know that they don't take it lightly and I don't take it lightly either, the trust that you placed in us by electing us and sending us down here to serve and to help support your interests and make St. Louis a better place to live, work, and play. Let's give all them a big round of applause. Last but not least, and I know I've missed some people and I'm looking around, I can't, can't, can't figure out who, but I know I've missed some people. But last but not least, uh, the people I have to thank the most are the people that share a household with me. The people that, uh, when I'm dead and gone, they will grieve the most. The people that when I'm hurt and sick, they take me to the hospital and they don't leave. The people that always there with me. My wife, Mary. Thank you. My sons Max and Sam, thank you. And my daughters Ashley and Sarah. I want to thank you all for everything. And to my wife, I know I haven't been there, but I will take the recycling out tonight. I promise, promise. And I will get the dishes done. They're stacked up and they're my, and it's my turn to do them. So, so, uh, you know, St. Louis, you know, just a message to the, to St. Louis and also a message to some of the newly-elected Aldermen. You heard one of the Aldermen say earlier that, uh, this is the most popular you will be Election Day. And, you know, when they told me that, when I showed up to the Board of Aldermen, I understood it, but I didn't appreciate it as much. You have to get to work now, like literally now. When you leave this meeting, you have to get to work now. Why? Because, you know, the decisions that you will make, uh, will be decisions that almost no matter what, you're gonna make some people mad and some people are gonna be very happy about the decisions you make. You have to do it from your moral compass, the things that, 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 all of the, the sum total of your knowledge and your upbringing that you bring to this board. That's what people voted for. They also voted for you because they said, okay, I, I think that you can represent us well, your ward. It's okay to engage in debate, uh, and it's okay to challenge ideas and it's okay to criticize ideas, but in this world, it's become very chic and in to challenge and to disparage people. There's no place for that. And you have a higher calling at this point in time. You have to be able to look past the personalities and look inwards to say, is that a good idea or a bad idea, no matter what else is swirling around it? And I'm here to tell you, a lot of times that's not easy, but that's your charge and that's what you're here to deliver. And that's the work that we're gonna do on this Board of Aldermen. We have some very difficult days ahead. When you take a look at some of the many things we have, we're challenged with. City-county unification. We're gonna have to figure out what to do with that. We're gonna have to figure out the airport deal and on and on and on and on. And when those things are done, there're gonna be more things ahead. We're gonna be looking at whether we're gonna reduce this Board of Aldermen and what reduction looks like. And I'm telling you that we're gonna get through it all. We're gonna get through that, but on the way, we're gonna work to erase and eliminate the Delmar divide in the city of St. Louis because it's high time that that happens. I want this board, this time, this board is gonna be the board that they write down in history, that has taken on the Delmar divide, that has taken on some of these many challenges all across our community and met those challenges and turned them around. But we can't turn them around by ourselves. Alderwoman from the 26th, you said it when you made your statement about you're not here by yourself. You stand with people with you. We're gonna, if we are able to address the issues of public safety, poverty, homelessness and everything in our city, it's gonna take more than 28 or 29 people. We're gonna have to bring some help. We're gonna have to, have to have some friends. We're gonna have to have friends in every sector, whether you're from the south side, you're part of it. Whether you're from the north side, you're part of it. Whether you're from the central corridor, you're part of it. The activist, activist community to the preachers, everybody's gonna have to play a role in this turnaround. And I can say a lot more, but I'm gonna close and say this, that St. Louis, we're a much greater city than most people give us credit for. We're a much greater city than a lot of times we even give ourselves credit for. We're closer together than we think we are. And we're not as far apart as people believe we are. You look across this room and you look across the diversity and Alderwoman from the 1st said it a few minutes ago when she talked about the fact that we now have 14 women serving on the Board of Aldermen. You have an African-American president of the Board of Aldermen that now has served longer than any president of the Board of Aldermen in the history of our city. It took everybody to do that. To do that, you need the activist community. To do that, you need the clergy. To do that, you need north side. To do that, you need south side. To do that, you need central corridor. You need Bosnians, Hispanics. You need everybody from every age group to do that. And that's what St. Louis is. So, I'm so excited to get to work with each and every one of you. Let's begin right now and get to work and let's change our city for the better. Let's put aside our differences. Let's rise to the occasion. And let's show everybody outside of St. Louis's borders exactly who and what St. Louis is. Thank you so much for giving me so much time to talk to you this morning. I'm gonna dispense with line items seven through 21. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution one, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Rhodey. The Board of Aldermen adopts the rules of the Board of Aldermen as the rules of the Board of Aldermen for the 2019-2020 session.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number one.
Yes, Mr. President. We are, uh, in the unique position of providing the, uh, public that is down here with us a behind-the-scenes look at what goes wrong. We, uh, evidently do not have all the changes that were incorporated, uh, at the, are adopted at the caucus.
I'll start on two and come back to you then.
Uh, we, I don't know if it'll be ready, but we'll at least, um, I, I believe they're working on getting the changes in the copies before.
Okay. Yeah, please state your point.
If there are changes being made, will they be highlighted so we know what the changes are?
Yes, yes. If you tell the clerk, they'll, they'll work to get it done.
I will, um, go talk to them now in case they're not doing that because I've, I've had two or three different copies put on my desk and taken away.
Yeah, make sure the clerk gets it. All right, thank, thanks all. Madam Clerk?
Resolution two, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Boyd. The Board of Aldermen is authorized by the ordinance to hire staff for the 2019-2020 session. The following individuals are appointed for the 2019-2020 session of the Board of Aldermen. Terry Kennedy Clerk, Sharita Rogers Assistant Clerk, Lisa McNichols Administrative Assistant, Tina Johnson Executive Secretary, Tracy Billups Executive Secretary, Teresa Chambers Executive Secretary, Sherry Beal Executive Sec- Secretary, Janice Mohammed Key Executive Secretary, vacant Executive Secretary, Louis Golly Legal Counsel, Gerald Hollins Jr. Financial Analyst, vacant Receptionist slash Typist, vacant Administrative Aid, vacant Legislative Researcher.
Alderman from the 22nd, recognize on the first reading of resolution number two.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of resolution number two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second about Alderwoman from the 14th. Alderman, would you like to request unanimous consent?
Oh, Mr. President, I request unanimous consent for resolution number two.
Hearing no objection.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of resolution number two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second about Alderwoman from the 14th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Gracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Mr. President? Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Todd. Alderman Cole. 27, I vote and one present.
I vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 22nd, and adopt the resolution number two. Move on to resolution three.
Resolution three, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Valmer. The Board of Aldermen authorizes and directs the direct, the clerk of the board to prepare the index to the journal of the board for the 2019-2020 session and that the journal be prepared in both a bound and printed format and a, eh, eh, elected-
both a bound and printed format and electronic format in numbers to be determined by the clerk, but in an event not to exceed 15 copies total.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on first reading of resolution number three.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I request unanimous consent.
Here are no objections, please proceed.
Thank you, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number three.
Move by Alderman from the 10th, entertain a second on the motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 13th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. Mr. President? Alderman Tyus. Alderman Howard. Twenty-nine aye votes.
By a vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 10th and adopt the resolution number three.
Resolution four, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Davis. The Board of Aldermen hereby authorizes a continued payment to each Alderman and the President of the Board of Aldermen of an expense allowance in the amount of $350 and the issuance of the equivalent of 200 United States postage stamps per month of such denomination required to mail a standard first-class business letter as a periodic payment to each Alderman.
Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number four.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I request unanimous consent.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 13th.
I didn't move it, I requested unanimous consent.
Please state your point of order.
We do not have copies of these resolutions on our desk.
It's in your agenda.
We don't need copies, we don't need printed copies in our books.
Your, your executive assistants should have had them in your book. If, if they don't have them, if, if, if they don't have them in your book and, and our attorney hasn't put them in there, we need to just, could you inquire of him, inquire of the attorney? I think he's right in the back room.
They don't have copies of these resolutions in their books.
I'm sorry, come again, fire the attorney?
Can we fire him?
What was just said, I'm so lost here, I just, no.
You had the opportunity a few minutes ago. You had the opportunity a few minutes ago, you hear what she said?
Inquire of the attorney, why?
On the mic.
Alderman from the 11th, the, the extent of resolution number four is actually in the paragraph. There isn't anything else in the resolution except for the, the stamps, what's, what's in that paragraph? That's, that is the resolution. Yeah, you have them in the agenda itself. That is the extent of that entire resolution. Yeah. So, Alderman from the 19th. Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President.
As you stated earlier, it, you know, I read through it, it is what is in the agenda, that's the extent.
Well, that I do know, sir. I was just waiting for everybody to finish.
Okay.
So I'd like to move to adopt resolution number four.
It was, you requested unanimous consent, there wasn't an objection to unanimous consent. Make the motion for me one more time, just so that everybody's clear.
Okay, I'll help you out there. I request unanimous consent, resolution number four.
Here are no objections, please proceed.
I move to adopt resolution number four.
Been moved by Alderman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard, Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. Mr. President? Alderman Bosley.
Alderman, Alderman, please stand and state your point of order.
Have any other resolutions at all? And I think a bunch of people within these sections don't have them. We're trying to figure out exactly what we're voting on.
The resolution is what's stated in the resolution, in the agenda itself, right? This is the entirety of the resolution as Alderman from, Alderman from the 19th stated and as we stated earlier. There isn't anything else to be put in there except for this. So if you take this agenda, slide it in that book, that is, that is, that is the, the resolution.
The April 16th agenda?
But, but Alderman, hold on a second.
Yes, sir.
During roll call, we cannot break roll call. So soon as we finish roll call, I'll finish taking it up with you, finish roll call.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Orion. Alderman Mohammed. I'm sorry, Mr. President?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Orion. Twenty-three aye votes and six no votes.
By a vote, you stay in the motion of the Alderman from the 19th and adopt the resolution number four.
That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
We'll dispense with line items 23 and 24 announcements.
Friday, April 26, 2019, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, oh, Alderman from the 9th announcement?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to take this opportunity to wish our colleague from the 25th a very happy birthday today.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? We also have refreshments in the Kennedy Room for people if you want to join your families and take pictures and have conversations over in the Kennedy Room when we wrap up. Alderman from the 2nd?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate Cameron Middlebrook, who left. He is receiving an award tonight for Academic Excellence. It's the Spirit of Excellence Award through the Parkway School District for fourth graders and that will be tonight at Two Hill on the Umsul Campus and I am proud of him and he is doing awesome in school. Thank you.
Alderman from the 25th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I appreciate the birthday salutation. Sorry I missed them. I was too busy inviting myself to the next Hubbard family reunion back here. For those of you that are interested in joining me, it's going to be taking place in Detroit this year. So I, I look forward to making my travel arrangements and enjoying the festivities. But I do want to thank everyone for, you know, recognizing my special day. It's a joy to be down here with all of these people that I get to spend so much of my life with. You know, two years ago, as many of you know, my mother passed away and it was the year that I got reelected. So it's so fun to be able to share in these memories with all of the new people who are coming down here right now. I hope that you cherish today and cherish all of the wonderful support and wonderful love that you're surrounded with today. It should mean the world and it should carry you through the next four years that you're down here. Congratulations on all of your victories. I look forward to working with you.
Alderman from the 14th?
I was just going to ask the Board of Aldermen if they'd like to sing "Happy Birthday" to the Alderman from the 20th. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Shane. Happy birthday to you.
Any further, any further? Alderman from the 3rd?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Hate to be the person who darkens the room a little bit, but this is everybody's special day. Congratulations to everyone. Hope we can make this an amazing legislative year for the city of St. Louis. But in the meantime, I know some people are in agreement, some people are not, but I'm going to say what I need to say regardless. There will be a meeting about the crime that exists in this city, April the 27th at Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club at 10:00 a.m. And we'll be speaking about the National Guard and any issues that we, or any, anything or any actions that we can do to take place within this city to where we can actually have some resolve on what's going on within the city. So that'd be a conversation that I'm sure a lot of people are eager to voice their opinion on. So that is a day that I'm setting so we can actually come together and have that conversation. I encourage our members of the Board of Aldermen, if your constituents have called and had dismay about the, the way that I voiced what I said or any conversations at all that are going on behind closed doors, this would be a day where you can bring those conversations to the forefront and we can actually have a realistic conversation within this city collectively from north and southeast and the west side, just all around what it is that we can do to try to combat some of these things that are going on within the city. So, once again, that'll be April 27th at 10:00 a.m. at Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. We, Alderman from the 21st?
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. On Saturday, April 27th, the Honorable Alderman Samuel Moore will be having a victory celebration from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Text the number 314-724-7566 for a special non-disclosed location. My guest is going to be on a Secret Service base for Alderman Moore.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Yeah, must RSVP. Sam, Alderman Moore said you must RSVP. Also want to send a special thank you out to the City Park residents and all of their support. Let's give them a big round of applause and families advocating safe streets. Ms. Cold Pepper, thank you all for all that you've done. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Mr. President, members of the Board, all Aldermen are present.
You recognize on the motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to continue the meeting till Friday, April 26th.
Been moved by Alderman from the 22nd and seconded by nearly everyone, Alderman from the 26th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. See you on the 26th.